Okay, the stream is up. President Reed, I'm about to open it up to the attendees. Okay, we are now recording and the meeting is open. President Reed, you can now begin. Hold on, President Reed, unmute your mic, please. President Reed, unmute your mic, please.
Yeah.
There you go. Okay.
Yeah, the board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
All the women, Tyus. All the women.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Hubbard.
Present.
Alderman Iggracia.
Present.
Alderman Koltar.
Here.
Alderman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Ballmer.
Present.
Alderman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman Howard.
Present.
Alderman Green.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Here.
Alderman Rhodey.
Present.
Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis.
Present.
Alderman Spencer.
Present.
Alderman Mohammed.
Here.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Vicaro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Present.
Alderman Con. Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderman Boyd.
Here.
Alderman Navarro.
Present.
President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Tyus.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Con.
Present.
Twenty-sixth present.
Quorum being present, we will begin the day's meeting with prayer and please keep in mind all of the people who have been tested positive for coronavirus. The people we've lost this year due to coronavirus and also the gun violence in the streets of the city of St. Louis and all of their families. Give it all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. We dispense with line item three. Any introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the twenty-third. Alderman from the twenty-third. Any further introduction of honored guests, any further introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're gathered here today on, what is, May twenty-ninth? It's on this day, Bing Crosby recorded the song "Like Christmas." In nineteen seventy-one, when I was twelve years old, "Brown Sugar" was a number one song. But more importantly, this is Joe Vicaro's National Holiday, Learn About Composting Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman from the tenth. Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes, May twenty-first, twenty-twenty.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for approved the minutes dated May twenty-first, twenty-twenty.
Second. The move by Alderman from the twenty-second, second by Alderman from the tenth. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. Reporter City official.
Reporter City official. Reporter City officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the Senior Services Fund Board. The reappointment of Ms. Mary Ann Nestor, who resides in the sixteenth ward and whose term will expire April seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four. The reappointment of Mr. Chauncey Bachelor, who resides in the seventeenth ward, whose term will expire April seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four. I respectfully request your approval of the reappointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz, Mayor.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the mayor's appointments.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for the appointment of the mayors. I'm sorry, my phone's ringing here. I didn't expect that. Apologize.
Start over, Alderman.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for approval of the mayor's appointments.
Second.
Move by Alderman from the seventeenth, second by Alderman from the tenth. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Objection! No!
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No!
Oppose?
No!
Motion carries.
That is the extent of reporter city officials.
I don't know who continues to mute my mic, but City TV and everybody, my mic should never be muted, so make sure not to mute my mic any further. We dispense with line items seven through ten, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill Thirty-two, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated February the twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, for the eighteen-hundred-eighteen-zero-eight Washington Boulevard area in the city of St. Louis after finding that the area is blighted as defined in section nine-nine-point-three-two-zero of the revised statutes of Missouri, twenty-sixteen, as amended, finding that there shall be available a ten-year tax abatement based on ninety-five percent of the assessed value of the increment improvements for eighteen-hundred through eighteen-zero-eight Washington Boulevard and pledging cooperation from the Board of Alderman. Board Bill Thirty-three, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated January the twenty-first, twenty-twenty, for the thirty-five-thirty-five through thirty-five-thirty-seven Missouri Avenue area in the city of St. Louis after finding that the area is blighted as defined in section nine-nine-point-three-two-zero of the revised statutes of Missouri, twenty-sixteen, as amended, finding that there shall be available a five-year tax abatement based on the fifty percent of the assessed value of the incremental improvements of thirty-five-thirty-five through thirty-five-thirty-seven Missouri and pledging cooperation of the Board of Alderman. Board Bill Thirty-four, sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated February the twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, for the eighty-eight-one-one through eight-one-seven North King's Highway Boulevard area in the city of St. Louis after finding that the area is blighted as defined in section nine-nine-point-three-two-zero of the revised statutes of Missouri, twenty-sixteen, as amended, finding that there shall be available a ten-year tax abatement based on ninety-five percent of the assessed value of the incremental improvements of eight-eleven through eight-seventeen North King's Highway and pledging cooperation of the Board of Alderman. Board Bill Thirty-five, sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated February the twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, for the five-one-four-three Dalemore Boulevard area in the city of St. Louis after finding that the area is blighted as defined in section nine-nine-point-three-two-zero of the revised statutes of Missouri, twenty-sixteen, as amended, finding that there shall be available a ten-year tax abatement based on ninety-five percent of the assessed value of the incremental improvements for fifty-one-four-three Dalemore Boulevard and pledging cooperation of the Board of Alderman. Board Bill Thirty-six, sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance requiring the city of St. Louis Department of Health and Hospitals to provide drug addiction and alcoholism treatment programs for city residents who require, who request such treatment and authorizing the department to contract with private entities to provide these programs or portions thereof. Board Bill Thirty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance requiring the land reutilization authority of the city of St. Louis to maintain or cause to be maintained at its sole cost and expense. The premises and exteriors of all land reutilization authority own properties free from weeds or plant growth in excess of six inches prohibiting the growth of noxious weeds and requiring all debris created by maintenance, cutting, and/or destruction of vegetation on the property be removed and disposed in accordance with applicable city ordinances. Board Bill Thirty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance requiring the city of St. Louis Department of Parks, Recreation, and Forestry to provide supervised recreation programs to all city of St. Louis parks and authorizing the departments to contract with private entities to provide these programs or portions thereof. Board Bill Thirty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance amending section two of ordinance six-eight-six-one-zero, approved March sixteenth, twenty-twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-ten, and amended by ordinance seven-zero-seven-five-two pertaining to the semi-annual registration fee to be charged the owner of any parcel residential property improvement by residential structure or commercial property improved by a structure containing multiple dwelling units, which is vacant and has been vacant during a prior six-month period and which is in violation of the city of St. Louis by increasing said annual fee from two-hundred to four-hundred dollars regardless of whether the owner is an individual, private entity, or public corporation as such the land reutilization authority of the city of St. Louis. Board Bill Forty, sponsored by Alderman Navarro, an ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for the five-zero-seven-eight-five-zero-eight-zero Dalemore Boulevard redevelopment area after finding that the area is blighted as defined in section nine-nine-point-three-two-zero of the revised statutes of Missouri as amended, finding that the financial aid may be necessary to enable the area to be redeveloped in accordance with the plan, finding that there should be available a ten-year tax assurance and pledging cooperation of the Board of Alderman and requesting various officials, departments, boards, agencies of the city to cooperate and to exercise their respective powers in a manner consistent with the plan. Board Bill Forty-one, sponsored by Alderman Koltar, an ordinance promoting the use of energy-efficient heating through the connection to the downtown stream distribution system, promoting the continual use of the downtown stream distribution system for any development project occurring in downtown St. Louis, seeking municipal financial incentives, providing the, I'm sorry, prohibiting the Clean Energy Development Board of the city of St. Louis from approving financial for any project that would result in a commercial building disconnecting from or no longer using the downtown steam distribution system for heat. A portion of the net profits be submitted to the S, to be remitted to the SWMDC and containing a sufficiency clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill Thirty-three, Thirty-four, Thirty-five, and Forty, to Health and Human Services, Board Bill Thirty-six, to the HUDs Committee, Board Bill Thirty-two, Thirty-seven, Thirty-nine, and Forty-one, and to the Parks Committee, Board Bill Thirty-eight. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of Streets Committee with a new pass recommendation. Board Bill Twenty-one, sponsored by Alderman Ballmer, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission approving the name of a new public street located in the city block four-zero-eight-four in the approved La Calina subdivision. That is the extent of second reading report of standing committee.
Dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill Twenty-five, sponsored by Alderman Spencer, an ordinance authorizing and directing the director of the city of St. Louis Department of Health to enter into and execute a contractor agreement with the National Association of County-City Health Officials as part of Center for Disease Control and Prevention Grant, CFDA nine-four, I'm sorry, nine-three-point-four-two-one, to fund use of public health and safety team toolkit upon approval of the Board of Estiment and Apportionment and to expand funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for the grant purposes and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the perfection consent.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Second by Alderman from the tenth, Alderman from the first.
Objection! Objection, Mr. President, I have my hands up. I would like this board bill taken off the perfection consent calendar. I did vote for it in committee and I do not want to vote for it as a perfection consent calendar.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please put Board Bill Twenty-five on the regular perfection calendar.
So noted. That is the extent of perfection consent calendar.
Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill Twenty-five, sponsored by Alderman Spencer, an ordinance authorizing and directing the director of the city of St. Louis Department of Health to enter into and execute a contractor agreement with the National Association of County and City Health Officials as part of the Center for Disease Control and Prevention Grant, CFDA nine-three-point-four-two-one, to fund use of a public health and safety team toolkit upon approval of the Board of Estiment and Apportionment and to expand funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for the grant purposes and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the twentieth, you recognize on the perfection of board bill number twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for perfection of board bill twenty-five.
Move by Alderman from the twentieth. Second by Alderman from the fourteenth. Any discussion? Alderman from the first.
Alderman from the.
Alderman from the first.
I keep unmuting and they keep muting it back. I'm sorry. Mr. President, members of the board, I am in support of the board bill. I am not in support of who is going to sign the board bill. And so I am going to vote present on this bill until we get some more things clear about our quote-unquote director, acting director of health, which there is no such title.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the twentieth, you recognize the close on the perfection of board bill twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This bill simply allows us to accept some grant money, and with that, I ask for your favorable support and of board bill twenty-five.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twentieth, second by Alderman from the fourteenth, that we perfect board bill number twenty-five. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
You gotta quit. Alderman Tyus.
Alderman Tyus.
They keep muting it. I'm sorry. Present.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Iggracia.
Aye.
Alderman Koltar.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vicaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. I'm sorry, Alderman Bosley, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Twenty-six, I votes and one present.
I think we have to redo one. Alderman Mohammed, we need you to unmute your video to do for your vote. We heard the audio, but we did not see your video. There you go. We got it. We got it. Madam Clerk.
Twenty-six, I votes and one present.
By your vote, stay in the motion, all along from twentieth and perfected board bill number twenty-five. Third reading consent.
We have none.
Third reading, report of engrossments.
We have none.
Report of enrollment.
We have none.
Courtesy resolutions.
We have none.
First reading of resolutions.
Resolution thirteen, sponsored by Alderman Vicaro, calling elected officials and certain employees to take fargo on weeks paid to offset the city's pandemic-related expenses.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you recognize on the first reading of resolution number thirteen.
Sure. So what the resolution does, there's people making a hundred, two-hundred, three-hundred thousand dollars. They also receive that same one and a half percent raise, you know, that someone making thirty thousand dollars. So what I'm calling on is that we, as the Board of Aldermen and all the elected officials and anyone making over a hundred thousand dollars, take a one-week furlough. I don't, I realize that might be hard on some of the Aldermen that do this as a full-time job. It's a resolution. It doesn't mean that we all have to. I know I will be taking that week. I might be in a little better position than some. I know that Alderman Oldenburg offered to also be a co-sponsor. So what I'd like to do is either pass this now, but otherwise, if you feel you want to put it in committee, I'm fine with that. So I'm open to listen to what everybody has to say.
All right, any further discussion on resolution thirteen? Alderman from the twentieth. Alderman from the twentieth.
My apologies, Mr. President. My hand is raised for another purpose, but.
All right, we'll have to, if it's not related to the resolution, we'll call you later. Ald. Alderman from the fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Prior to, I guess, doing a resolution like this, I would like to see what the actual numbers are. Some of us are privileged to have other careers outside of the Board of Aldermen. Some of us who are extremely busy don't, and I just would have some concerns about us jumping out there ahead of this and giving ourselves a pay cut when we haven't done a true assessment of what the needs are, and that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I definitely would support sending this to committee for further discussion. I think that, you know, this is something that I wasn't expecting to see. I haven't heard any reports from Ways and Means yet in terms of what we, I've heard expectations, but I haven't seen any, you know, actuals or numbers and recommendations from the, you know, either the Budget Office or E and A with respect to any particular budget recommendations or cuts for this particular fiscal year. So I do think that this is worthy of more discussion. The Alderman from the twenty-third and I both got elected at the same time at the height of the Great Recession back in two thousand and nine. He and I both went through, you know, dealing with furloughs for city employees back then, and the Board of Aldermen did give back part of their salary at that point in time. So, you know, I, of course, do see and consider that a potential option, you know, for addressing some of these budgetary shortcomings. But I do think that it would require more discussion before we pass this out by the full board or take a vote today, so I would appreciate the Alderman from the twenty-third referring it to committee.
All right, Alderman from the first. Alderman from the twenty-third, you'll have to wait until I call on you again. Alderman, please mute your mic. Alderman from the first.
I lost my video. I lost my video, so Alderman from the twenty-fifth said what I was gonna say anyway, so thank you.
Okay. Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would the Alderman from the twenty-third yield for a couple of questions?
Yes, but before we get there, Alderman from the eleventh, I see you and I have your, I have you marked down, but if you would, do the little blue icon hand because I'm taken from that list. I don't want you to, I didn't want you to continue to sit there with your hand up, so I do have you down, and I'll get to you. Alderman from the twenty-third, will you yield a question?
Yes.
Twenty-fourth. Alderman from the twenty-fourth, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Alderman from the twenty-third. Did you do the math on this to figure out what the potential savings would be for the city if this did go into effect?
Gerard actually did part of it for me. I don't have the total number, and that's why I am fine with going to committee. I just know that if we're talking about, and I'm hoping that we correct this, but if we're talking about taking away ward capital, street lights, paving, sidewalks, dumpsters, speed humps, you know, my issue was a lot of people got hurt through all this, waiters, waitresses that didn't receive salaries. Even though the number isn't gonna fix the budget, no matter what that number is, although the budget seems fairly balanced, we just need to get our ward capital back, which I hope and believe we will. This is more just a gesture that, you know, we're also willing to take that same.
And I do appreciate that, and this is just kind of a strange time. I know typically on something like this, we kind of run around City Hall and discuss it with each other, and given the situation now, we can't really do something like that. Have you talked to many other Aldermen about this? I fear that there might be a disproportionate economic impact on this. I know that some Aldermen may not even notice that a week's salary is not in their bank account, whereas I know some Aldermen, you know, they have children, this is their main income, and I do have some concern that this might really negatively affect some of our colleagues, and I'm just curious if you've spoken. uh, that this might really negatively affect, uh, some of our colleagues. And I'm just curious if you've, if you've spoken to, uh, to some of those folks who may be the most impacted by something like this.
No. So here's my thing. I'm fine with the going to committee so we could further discuss it. But keeping in mind that later this year, next year, depending on the budget, we may have to ask the employees, all of them, to furlough. And if we're not willing to lead, I see, well, you know, Alderman Davis thinks no. I'm glad that she feels differently, but I was here as well as she was when everyone had to furlough. And this is more, I feel we should lead the pack. Now, even back then, not everyone furloughed. This isn't a board bill. It's simply a resolution. Doesn't mean that you have to forego a week's salary. I agree. There are some Aldermen, and the Aldermen are definitely underpaid. For the thirty-eight thousand dollars, there's a city employee out there that would do the work and be put in the position we are and say, we're going to give you thirty-eight thousand dollars. Those employees are making around a hundred, some of them as much as three hundred thousand dollars. And they, they, you know, so I, I agree. That's why this is a resolution. It's not a board bill. It's not mandatory. I think it should be put in the committee, and I'm fine with whatever committee to discuss it. And I absolutely agree that not everyone is in a position to, to do this. And that's understandable. Because some of us, some of us, well, I do it full-time, but I'm a little bit more blessed. Um, and I'm sure you're doing okay as an attorney that, you know, so I'm sure there's certain of us that can and, and, uh, you know, uh, I will admit that Alderman Hubbard works hard for her neighborhood, and I don't know if this is her only job or not. I, I'm assuming it is. But this is the, the, I'm fine with being referred to committee. Uh, I just think that at some point, if we're going to have to ask people, which we may not ever have to ask, but if we have to ask, we need to be leaders, not say, well, uh, vote that everybody should take a furlough except us. So that, that's, that's my thought process behind this.
I, I, I do appreciate that. Um, and, you know, I, I, I'm, uh, supportive of the idea that we certainly do need to kind of lead by example here. I just have some, some concerns about the overall economic impact if, 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 uh, uh, one week, uh, makes a, a large difference in the budget, or if it's just kind of a token gesture. And then if it, uh, would put anyone in, you know, kind of dire economic straits here. Um, but, uh, I, I think those are probably questions best left for committee. Uh, thank you for yielding, and I have nothing further.
Alderman from the fourteenth.
Hold on.
There we go. We have you.
Okay. I couldn't find it. Um, I admire the Alderman from the twenty-third's, um, heroism on introducing this. However, I am concerned about those city employees who are, you know, ma- barely getting by on fifteen dollars an hour. Uh, and the effect that giving up a week's pay may have on them and their family, you know, especially in light of the fact that, you know, maybe now this is the only person still working in the family. And I think that, you know, sending it to committee allows us to, um, discuss these eventualities. And also, I, I guess, is this a way to recover our, um, uh, money for the, um, ward capital? Is this what we're trying to do is, is recover that? If that's, if that's the case, I just don't think this is a way to recover ward capital by taking it away from other people. But we'll say that for the committee. Thank you very much.
All right. Um,
I, I would like to-
Alderman from the twenty-third, please mute your mic. You're gonna, you have to wait until I call on you again. Alderman, Aldo- Alderman from the nineteenth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, I do know that there is a process for decisions like this. And going to committee and getting the appropriate, uh, entities involved in this for this decision to be made, it was not made lightly the last time we had to do it, nor should it be this time. And I think we're premature on even discussing this at this moment. But, uh, I would like to definitely bring in the appropriate officials who guide us with our budget and all the things that affect the budget and the various functions of the city of St. Louis. Uh, this is, this is not about who makes how much money. Uh, I, I don't think that's fair because people are hired to do a job at a certain salary, and it was agreed upon, and we agree with the budget. And so that's not a discussion to be had. But what I'd like to do is to make sure that we don't get ahead of ourselves and not knowing and understanding the effects of everything and when it is appropriate to do it. Uh, that's all I ask. So, uh, taking it to committee is one thing that can help with that. And I think, uh, we should be smart and prudent to follow our own guidelines with the appropriate entities throughout this process. And Ways and Means is not going to just approve a budget and walk away. We'll continue to have oversight. Uh, the Budget Director, our Controller, all those entities really must be involved in this. And I thank you for the opportunity, sir.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, um, inquire, uh, the Alderman from the twenty-third, please.
Alderman from the twenty-third, will you yield a question to the Alderman from the eleventh?
Yes, I will.
Alderman from the eleventh, please proceed.
Thank you. Um, I am, I'm not opposed to something like this. Um, I just had some questions, and maybe I'll sound like a broken record after what some of our colleagues have said, but, um, do you plan on having a fiscal note prepared on this if it goes to committee?
Yes. And I would want to correct something, that this does not infect, affect, I'm sorry, all the employees. Uh, the Alderman from the fourteenth said there's employees that cannot, this only calls for elected officials and uh, people that are making over a hundred thousand dollars, not anybody under a hundred. Uh, there's got, there's people making eighty, ninety thousand, whatever. It does not affect them. It doesn't affect anybody making thirty thousand. This is just saying that the, really, really would, it would, what I remember from the last time, it was elected officials and like appointed heads of departments. But rather than actually point that out that way, I thought it would be easier to say anyone making a salary over a hundred thousand dollars. And my issue had to do with, everybody got, not us, the Aldermen don't get anything. We, but everybody got a one and a half percent pay raise. Some people got one and a half percent of two and three hundred thousand dollars that they make. Where other people only got one and a half percent of the twenty-something thousand dollars they make. So where some people, and I've always felt it's unfair the way they do that, then the money should be just a pot divided. Because I'd rather have one and a half percent of three hundred thousand than one and a half percent. But that's why I worded it that way. So this, this does not, in, 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 in response to the Alderman, uh, this, this was put together, and, and certainly it should go to committee. And, 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 um, even the last time, not everyone took it. And I don't know that it, it was very public as to who took it and who didn't. It was one week for, uh, to be honest, actually, the Aldermen couldn't take it because it's against any ordinance of law for us to turn back our money. But we did it anyway. Some of us it took two weeks, some took one week, some took a day. It was, it was very mixed as to what the Aldermen took. By law, no elected official can say, gee, I'll work for free. Um, I'm sorry, I'm getting on a tangent.
I mean, I, 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 I appreciate what you, I, I appreciate what you're saying, especially about the percentages of the raises. Um, just the other concern I have too is that, um, a- and not to say this couldn't be figured out, but, um, I feel like, uh, our budget is just, um, it's so siloed, uh, yesterday where there was the mention of the special funds. Um, and then today during our board meeting, the mayor's announcing, um, some sort of budgetary announcement that we have no idea, and that we didn't know in our discussions or in Ways and Means discussion the last couple of days. Um, how would, do you have an idea or recommendation on how this money would be, uh, either dispersed or allocated? Um, what fund?
I, I would hope that in committee that we could come up with that, even if it's, uh, I mean, I'm sure there's only certain places it can go. I don't think we want to put it in the general fund, but maybe we could put it in the demolition, maybe we could put it into housing. I'm not sure. It's not going to be a tremendous amount of money. If all of it comes out to be between three hundred and five hundred thousand dollars, it's not like it's going to solve our budget. It, it, it might help with something. And, and certainly, we'll put it in committee, you know, and then it's up to whoever chairs that committee. And I'm fine with whatever committee it goes to as to how they proceed along. I mean, uh, it could go into legislation, it could go, I'll leave it up to the president where it goes. Uh, I don't believe it goes to public safety because I don't see that. But, um, so I think it would be up to the chairman to, to schedule the meetings and to discuss it. I, I, this was just my thought when I'm, you know, it came up, uh, realistically came up, Elliot Davis somewhat started it and asked me that question. So I said, well, you know, and, and, and so when they asked the mayor's office, or they actually asked Conway, and I think it was part of a news thing, he said, well, the, the, the mayor's already made, made your cuts already. And I replied, well, it's easy to make cuts to other people. Then he asked, well, then what do you propose? I said, well, then maybe we should take it first. Um, and it was in response to that, is what it was.
Okay. No, and I, I appreciate it. I just want to make sure, um, that, um, I mean, I think, I think it certainly could be a gesture. Um, I just want to make sure that it has a meaningful impact and not just necessarily political, um, the, you know, the folks making over a hundred thousand dollars, sure, that certainly is a lot of money. But they may also have a hundred thousand dollars in debt, um, to student loans because of their expertise and why we hired them. So I really just, if we are going to cut any city employee's salary, I want to make sure that, um, A, we need to do it, and it, and it goes where it needs to go, and actually has an impact, and it isn't just a political gesture um, from us, which we can certainly make on our own. So, um, thank you very much. I appreciate the discussion.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Alderman from the sixteenth. Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Can the Alderman from the twenty-third yield, uh, a question?
Alderman from the twenty-third, will you yield a question to the Alderman from the twenty-first?
Always for my friend, Jack.
Okay.
Uh, my buddy. Thank, thank you, uh, Mr. President. Thank you, Alderman. Um, you say Elliot Davis brought this idea to you? I'm just, I'm trying to figure out where the imagination behind this board bill.
So Elliot Davis talked to me about the budget and asked if we're going to do furloughs. I guess he was very aware we had done them in the past. My suggestion, and so when I was talking, which I did on camera, I said, if there's cuts that are made, and you go back and look at it, that we should lead the way, that the Board of Aldermen and, and, you know, the heads of departments. So I talked to, uh, Lou Golly at that point because, um, you know, we, we had discussed what, how this would be, what, what's the best way. Uh, you know, one of the things that Elliot said, if we do furloughs, can, you know, and say, let's say the mayor would furlough, can she furlough? So the furloughs could be taken a half a day at a time. They could be taken one day out of the check, you know, over time. Um, so, yes. So the, the thought of the furloughs and coming back to that certainly was an answer to a question which then I felt, well, we should lead the way. Now, I know that it's not a popular thing amongst anybody. Nobody wants to lose a week's salary, including me. Believe me, I got bills the same as everybody else. Uh, so, you know, so then they came about with a question, and that was my answer to his question. Then I checked into it with Lou Golly to see, and I did ask Gerard what the, how much would, uh, bring in. His estimate was about three hundred thousand. Uh, but it, it wasn't just a guess. So, you know, so, you know, like at this point, like I said, I'm more than willing to have it in committee where we can at least talk about it and, and, and maybe bring in city employ- uh, not city employees, but bring in the employees that make over a hundred thousand dollars to, to discuss it.
It, it, you know, Alderman, but it's, it's only two employees of the Board of Aldermen that makes over, uh, one hundred thousand dollars.
No, 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 no. No, I know city employees that make over a hundred thousand. The director of the airport, I can, I can go down the list, the, the mayor's chief of staff, people, and I'm not talking about Alderman. Alderman's salary is thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Right. It, well, in, in a resolution, it says city elected officials and members of the bo- and employees to the Board of Aldmen.
Right. Because I-
That's what the re- that's what the res- that's what the resolution says. So I'm just going up with what the resolution says. So the resolution is calling on Alderman to basically give up their salary, a salary that only costs the city a little, just a little over a million dollars.
Right. I, in, 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 Chad, I, I don't disagree. That's why I'm saying, let's put it in committee where we can talk about it. Everything starts somewhere, and any changes could be made in committee. This, this is not put out there to embarrass or do anything. I'm, I'm perfectly willing to move it to committee. You know, we, 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 we put stuff out because we believe in. And then, for whatever purposes, as we discuss it, maybe we have changes, amendments. Again, this isn't a board bill. It's only a resolution. It's just a thought.
Yeah, but no, I, I think it's more than just for fun. I think it also expresses-
Not for fun.
It expresses our feelings or, or, it expresses what we think about a particular issue, and this could lead to something else. Uh, uh, we, we don't know what this could lead to. This is like opening up Pandora's Box. And, and I, I get the idea of the resolution, uh, and I applaud that idea. But I think that it's, it's, it's wrongly guided. I think that if we really want to save money, I think we need to look at this frivolous spending that we have going on in the city. We, we're paying directors and commissioners two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand dollars to do the same job. I think we need to start there. I don't think starting with one of the lowest-paid aspects of city government will help. Uh, and I guess Elliot Davis, you know, him, him being the expert legislator that he is, I guess he would know that, that, you know, just eliminating the Board of Aldmen or, or, or taking our salary will save the money, will save the city trillions of dollars. So.
No, well, and again-
I appreciate Alderman Elliot Davis.
No, so again, this, this does not affect the lower-paid employees. And at some point, and we could even readjust this in committee to say that before we ask city employees, all city employees to take a furlough, that we would be the first one. And, and I would be fine with adjusting it in committee.
All right. Any, any further discussion, Alderman from the twenty-first? Um, you're muted. You're currently muted, Alderman.
Thank, 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 thank you, Alderman Bakoro. You're my buddy.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would just like to point out that when we did do this back in two thousand nine, um, and I believe actually two thousand ten, I think we did it two fiscal years in a row, if I'm not mistaken. Um, these actions were very much planned in advance. They were communicated in advance. Um, I think the Aldermen from the twenty-fourth ward had an excellent point in that, uh, you know, we do have, uh, Alder people in particular who are in various, uh, you know, um, degrees of financial, uh, uh, dependence on the salary, um, whether it be for themselves and/or their families. But, but I think, uh, you know, when we did go through this the last time, there was the opportunity to take it in increments over a full year. Whereas now we're coming up, you know, with just a few months left and the fiscal- you know, with just a few months left and the fiscal year. Um, and so you're looking at, you know, just giving that up, uh, you know, in its entirety basically within a, a, a month or two, you know, coming up once this resolution ends up passing out of committee, if it passes out of committee. But um, to, you know, this being a resolution, it, it certainly isn't binding on anyone. Um, so it does make it feel as though it's not taking the matter as seriously as, as we should be taking it serious. Um, and that it is just a political gesture instead of, you know, actually putting pen to paper legislating, working with the city budget, working, you know, we have pay bills that come through. We have, you know, the, the city's budget, obviously that, you know, we have to work through. If there are going to be furloughs of employees, then, you know, that needs to work its way through the budget, you know, budgetary process. Um, I, I understand the Alderman sentiment to, you know, want to get ahead of it or, you know, lead by example. Um, but I think we also need to understand, you know, how is this going to contribute back to the city's budget? What are we going to do with the funds? I don't think it's particularly, you know, a significant amount of money that you're going to end up getting, you know, via this resolution. Um, you know, the Alderman keeps throwing out, you know, city employees that are making three hundred thousand dollars. To my knowledge, there's not a single city employee that's making three hundred thousand dollars. Um, if, if I'm not mistaken, I believe the director of airports is the highest paid position in city government and, you know, she makes right around two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, um, maybe a little bit more if I'm not mistaken. Um, but I'm not aware of any elected office or any city employee who makes, you know, more than, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So to say that there's a, you know, city employees out there making three hundred thousand or more, I think is very unfair to our, our city employees as well. Most of them are making well under a hundred thousand dollars. Um, you know, so even folks who are making a hundred thousand dollars, uh, you know, I, there aren't that many of those folks either. You know, I, I mean legitimately, we're not looking at a, a lot of people um in that respect, but I believe it was uh, you know, uh, my colleague from uh, maybe the fourteenth ward, you know, who mentioned, you know, that, or maybe it was the eighth, but regardless, I think, you know, you're talking about folks even at a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, no, it was the eleventh ward, who have obligations as well, you know? And, and here we are coming up on the end of the fiscal year. There's not a lot of opportunity to plan. Um, and when we did do these actions in the past, you know, we did them in advance so that people had the opportunity to plan. They could select when they were opting to take their furlough time or which pay cycle that they wanted to miss time or money from. And so I think that that's a really important factor here as well. Um, and certainly we can discuss it in committee, but what, these are very serious matters that need to be discussed. They shouldn't be done on a whim. Um, I don't think that they should be done via resolution, but you know, if that's the route the, you know, Alderman from the twenty-third chooses to take, I think that, you know, certainly we, we can have that discussion in committee. But I do believe that we need to afford people the opportunity to plan, which I don't think, given the timing left in the fiscal year currently, that, that, that's an option right now. Anyways, that's uh about all I, I have to say to wrap up and I would certainly appreciate this being referred to committee.
All right. Thank you. And um, uh, just to underscore the discussions today, the currently Alderman from the twenty-third has not made a request for unanimous consent, has not made a request to send this to committee or anything, right? And you can do that with a, with a resolution. Uh, but that leaves it open, that has left it open to a much broader discussion, uh, a discussion that would best be suited in committee, right? Uh, so we're essentially covering some of the things that you all would be covering in, in the committee hearing. I would recommend that Alderman from the twenty-third, if you're looking to send this to committee, uh, you know, make a motion to send this to committee. You can send it to Ways and Means or Public Employees, but you are well within your rights uh according to our rules to um discuss this resolution um without making a motion, right? Opposed to, you know, what we have to do uh when we have a board bill. But due to the nature of the discussions and the way they're going, if you are planning to send it to committee, I would appreciate a motion now to send it to committee. That way these, these discussions can continue in committee where they, uh, where they would have a much better opportunity to have a much longer uh, uh discussion on. You can send it to Ways and Means or Public Employees. I think both of those committees uh would be good fits. Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we send it, well, either one's fine with me. We, we can, uh, let's do it to public employees because-
All right. That's all, that's all I need. Alderman from the twenty-third, you uh has moved that we assign resolution thirteen to public employees. I entertain a second on that.
Second.
Second about Alderman from the tenth. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that, sign, assign resolution thirteen to- Let me start that over. Anyone who did not get a chance to talk today, um, I am going to ask that the chairman of public employees, please give you an opportunity to speak on this issue because it affects each and every one of us. Alderman from the twentieth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to, I have uh placed on all the Aldermen's mailboxes by way of email, um, a resolution to consider. Uh, I'd like to request the suspension of-
Uh, uh, Alderwoman, if you have not contacted each and every alderperson this year that they printed those out, we cannot do that kind of thing today. It, we're not, we're not, we're not at the full board so that people can have access to those documents. I don't have access to them and we can't do that today. Please uh, uh, bring your resolution next week. Uh, second reading.
Resolution eight.
Mr. President.
Sponsored by Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Rice, Alderwoman Martin, Alderwoman Iglesias, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderwoman Navarro, and Alderwoman Middlebrook. Absentee voting during COVID nineteen.
Alderman from the fifteenth, you recognize on the second reading, the resolution number eight.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, first I'd like to point out, I think that some of the cosponsors are not listed on our agenda. Um, the website seems to be complete, um, but I think that there's a total of seventeen cosponsors on this. Uh, so I do want to make sure that, that that is all uh taken-
We'll, we'll have the um, uh, Madam Clerk, could you please read the list of all the cosponsors for resolution eight if you have?
Um, let me go to the website.
All right. You can grab those while Alderwoman from the fifteenth, please proceed.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, members of the board. This is a refresher. Uh, resolution eight is uh the resolution that would um have us follow the lead of St. Louis County um by asking our Board of Election Commissioners to mail out absentee ballot applications to everybody who is sixty-five years of age or, sorry, sixty years of age or older within the city at minimum and at maximum, um, every registered voter in the city of St. Louis. Uh, St. Louis County did this uh a few weeks ago. Uh, again, we are not sending uh ballots to people. We are just making it easier to um for them to request an absentee ballot application and informing people in that process with a letter from the Board of Elections that would detail that uh under uh COVID nineteen, being confined due to uh, to illness is a, a way that you can vote um absentee. Uh, since we last talked about this uh at the full board just a few weeks ago, uh, the General Assembly did pass SB six thirty-one. Um, and that uh Senate bill sets out kind of two categories for uh being able to vote via absentee because of COVID nineteen. If you're in an out risk category, sixty-five or older, uh, or immunocompromised, have any of the, you know, myriad of things that make you more at risk for COVID nineteen, uh, you can request a ballot and vote absentee without having to notarize. Um, if you do not fit into one of those at-risk categories under that bill, um, you can still vote absentee, but you would have to um have that ballot notarized. And so we're asking the city, the Board of Election Commissioners basically to take a proactive stance on this. Um, yeah, uh, to make it as easy as possible for folks to access absentee ballot applications and access the ballot box um all the way through November. So I appreciate the uh, the support of so many members of the Board of Aldermen and would like to make a motion to adopt uh resolution eight.
It's been moved by Alderman from the fifteenth that we adopt resolution eight. I am taking a second. Seconded by Alderman from the seventh and a few others, Miss, but Alderman from the seventh. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the thirteenth.
Oh, yeah, no, Mr. President, my uh question was going to be, uh, I thought I was a sponsor. So I, if not, I want to make sure my, a cosponsor, I'm sorry. I want to make sure my name is on that. So that, that was my question. I know they're checking now, so.
Okay. All right. Excellent. Uh, Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, if the uh Alderwoman from the fifteenth would yield?
Alderman from the fifteenth, we yield a question instead of Alderman from the first.
Yes.
Alderman from the first, please proceed.
Um, so, thank you, Mr. President. Um, Alderwoman, I know you and I have been speaking about this uh in this uh resolution and we've been following that the uh, what the uh General Assembly did. Do you know if the governor signed this bill or not?
He has not, but my understanding um from talking with uh voting rights act, uh activist, Denise Lieberman testified in committee earlier this week on this bill that um they, they think that he will sign it this next week, but it goes into effect immediately. And so they, he didn't want to sign it when we have elections on Tuesday, um, in a good portion of the state, which could have uh kind of upset that there would not have been the time to uh, to implement this, this quickly across the state.
Okay, and I'd request that my name be added. I have no further questions.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that, add to Alderman from the first. Alderman from the twentieth.
Mr. President, I still have my hand raised.
Well, if you're, if you're talking about the resolution, that is not up for discussion. You can talk, we, please feel free to reach out to me after the meeting. Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, uh, let's see, next one. The Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. Uh, I just wanted to thank the Alderwoman from the fifteenth and say, I think this is a great idea to get absentee ballot applications in everyone's hands leading up to the August election. Um, I think it would also be good as we move forward for this board to try to coordinate with the election board and figure out how we can help them uh supplement what is going to probably be a shortage of, of election day poll workers, um, actual election judges. You know, this is a population that's generally much older. It's a retired population that helps run our elections uh every, every, you know, couple times a year usually. Um, I think it would be great if we could figure out a way to get city employees, court employees and other folks um who have, you know, familiarity with complex systems and computers and everything to, to step in and maybe take the day and, and work for the election, election board. Um, I'm hoping we can get something figured out on that front uh in the coming months. Um, thank you for this, Alderwoman, and I'm glad to see the legislature take some action, uh, adding some steps to allow uh COVID as an excuse for absentee voting going forward.
Thank you. Alderman from the fifth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I didn't make the hearing when um, I guess this resolution was in the hearing or whatever, but did the Board of Elections come and, and testify and state that they would be um up to port to actually assist with this or, or are we just waiting for the state or what?
Would you want to require inquiry of the Alderman from the-
I'm sorry, of the Alderman from the fifteenth with-
Alderman from the fifteenth, we yield a question instead of Alderman from the fifth.
So the Board of Elections has not uh reached a decision either way uh on this issue as of yet. And I think that our voice behind this um can give them the impetus that they need to take the step to do this, to say that, you know, they have the backing of the full Board of Aldermen, um, and they have the backing. I know a lot of us have heard concerns from our constituents in doing this. Um, again, this is a resolution, so at the end of the day, it'll be up to the Board of Election Commissioners to decide to do this or not. Um, although the city of St. Louis, independent of the Board of Election Commissioners, um, we could actually send uh absentee ballot applications as well. Any entity can. Um, we can't send ballots, but applications, anybody can, um, can give those out. And so, you know, my hope in doing this is it gives the, the extra oomph that we need um to get the Board of Election Commissioners to decide to do this.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Alderman from the twenty-third. Yes, um, I was just going to ask and maybe it's not a good idea, but I was kind of hoping we could just put it in bank, you know, that we all support this together. Looks a little stronger again. It's just a resolution. It's not a board bill. So I'm making a motion that we put it in bank and it's to everybody. It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third, seconded by Alderman from the ninth, that we make this resolution in bank. Is there any objection to uh that motion? Any objection to that motion? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Alderman from the nineteenth.
Mr. President? Oh, were you recognizing my hand being raised?
Yes.
Okay, it's, it's been taken care of. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman from the twenty-seven. Alderman from the twenty-seven. Alderman from the twenty-seven. Alderman from the first.
Um, yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I just wanted to remind all of those Democrats down there that uh we just have at this point, unless they've hired in the last two days, a Republican director over at the Board of Elections, and we need to get a Democratic director over there so that we can make sure that, I, I'm sure everything is fair, but we need to make sure he has help. So um, we're only getting half of, uh, we're getting the Republican view represented and so we need to find a, a Democratic director to send over to the Board of Elections if that has not been taken care of right now.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the fifteenth, seconded by Alderman from the seventh, that we adopt resolution number eight. Uh, it's also uh been uh amended in bank. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. She carries.
Second reading resolutions.
All right. Uh, Ms. Lanis, unfinished business.
We have.
Uh, announcements.
Saturday, May thirtieth, twenty twenty, Ways and Means will have a public comment hearing, ten AM via webinar. Tuesday, June second, Ways and Means will have a meeting, ten AM webinar. Wednesday, June third, HUZ will have a meeting, nine AM with webinar. Rules will meet at ten AM via webinar. Thursday, June fourth, Transportation will have a meeting, ten AM via webinar. And Friday, June fifth, full board meeting, ten AM via webinar. That is the extent of the announcements.
Any further announcements, any further announcements? Uh, before we wrap up, just want to remind everyone about the um, uh, the structure of these meetings while we're, while we're having these online meetings. Um, as I mentioned, when we first did our training, it's so important that you are organized and you get all your stuff in on time. So, you know, I want to thank all the Aldermen who have abided by that so that we can actually have the things on the agenda in front of us and that we assure that there's fair and uh informed deliberation on the things that we are, are working on. Um, so I'm asking the all the person, all the ones from the twentieth to adhere to that. Uh, we cannot get things at the last minute and just, you know, suspend the rules and put them in when people have not seen them, read them, or understand what they're dealing with. read them, or understand what they're dealing with, because we are in a different setting here today. So again, thanks to everyone that has done that consistently. It has allowed us to run these meetings in a balanced and fair way that's been informative and that has, you know, upheld the, the nature of what the Board of Aldermen is. So I appreciate everybody for doing that. Madam Clerk? Anything further?
That's the extent of the announcements.
All right, Alderman from the twenty-fifth?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have two items. One, to your point about the kind of circumstances that we're operating in currently, do we have a timeline?
Not, not that I can give you today, but I'll, I'll send out an email and we'll, I'm working with the clerk right now to determine it.
Okay, so, and also are we allowed to go back into the office?
So. Yes, if you want to go back in, if you need to get access to the office, you can get access to the office for whatever you need. And that's up to you, right? So you just go to, enter through the circle drive, if the other doors lock, enter through the circle drive, the guard will allow you access and then you just go up to the office and you should have the key to the Board of Aldermen's door to go in, check your mail or whatever you feel like you need to do. But, but I'm going to be in discussions with the, I'm already in discussions with the clerk, so we'll get more information out to you as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. And then I also came in slightly late during roll call, but I don't recall this happening. But if not, can we have a moment of silence for George Floyd?
Oh, we did not, thank you, Alderman. Yes, would you like to, you, you want me to do it, or you're going to do it?
I, I'm just requesting that.
Would everyone in, I'll ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence for George Floyd? Thank you all, thank you all, and Alderman from twenty-fifth, thanks for that. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderwoman, if, again, I will recognize Alderwoman from the tw- twentieth and Alderwoman from the eighth, but I'm telling you, I'm cutting you off if you want to get into a long drawn out discussion about not being organized for today's meeting. If you have any, if you have announcement unrelated to that, I will recognize you. If it's not related to that, please take your hand up. Is it related to something other than you not having your information and time for today's agenda? Yes or no, shake your head yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, Alderwoman from the eighth?
Thank you, Mr. President. My, my question, and it refers to what Alderman Cohen was saying. As we are continuing to meet in this format, I'm wondering if we can get some more procedures as far as who is doing the muting and unmuting and how those things work? If we could get sort of a written plan and a common understanding of how points of order are being made and when microphones will be unmuted? Because a few times, over the last several weeks, members of our body have been cut off in the middle of, of speaking or close to the end of how they were speaking and sometimes we can't get unmuted and back and forth. And so I think it would be helpful to have a common understanding of, of who's doing the muting and unmuting and how we control that.
All right, that should have been in the original documents that we, we gave to you, I'll send that information out again. What you may be experiencing is just that lag in time, right, from muting to unmuting. Because when you are unmuted by the people who are managing the forum, right? We still have to wait for each individual Alderman to unmute themselves, right? So, so there's a lag in time on those things, so. But you should have all that information, we'll send it out to you again. Any further, any further announcements? Alderwoman, Alderwoman from the twentieth, do you have an announcement?
I do, Mr. President.
Please proceed.
I would like to announce a Health and Human Services Committee hearing next Thursday at eleven AM. I would also like to request from your office some clarification on the rules related to introducing on the floor, which is a part of.
Alderwoman, Alderwoman, we're not going to discuss that, we're moving forward, you have the information, please read the information and, and understand the information moving forward. Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion to excuse?
Mr. President, members of the board, all members are present.
All right, you recognize on the motion to adjourn?
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to adjourn to next Friday, June fifth at ten AM.
By Alderwoman from twenty-second, seconded by Alderwoman from the thirteenth, and Alderman from the tenth, all in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. A little late, Alderwoman, you're having a great event, appreciate all you, and thanks, thank you so much for all of your continued hard work.
Adios.